2018, it's order. Roll call.
Knight. Allen.
Yeah.
Gensick.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Bontrager. Pavilio.
Yes.
Walkley. Alt.
Okay. And we have approval for the agenda. If anyone wants to change something. If not, I need a motion and second.
Motion.
Move.
Go ahead.
Don't fight over it.
Approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Let me wait, hang on. Okay. Nichols.
Yes.
Gensick.
Yes.
Pavilio.
Yes.
Allen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, approval minutes we don't have here right now until this meeting's over. So, B8.
We are going to be meeting at our regularly scheduled time in October.
It'll be approved at that time.
We do have a variance request and I just figured to get things moving tonight, we'll just do those minutes at that meeting. And the minutes for tonight.
Okay. I guess it's your turn, Mike.
Okay. The meeting tonight is a continuance of a meeting earlier this month. And it specifically was to give us all an opportunity to receive more public comment. And so, we rescheduled it. It's here. The applicant is here again tonight. I'm not going to go over every little detail I did last time because all of you were here. I'm certainly going to go over the standards. Mr. Sabert's here. He did a presentation then. I'm not sure if he wants to speak, but he's certainly here for questions from any of you. So, I will proceed from there. The application is for the, what will be, what is proposed, the Cadillac Castle site. This is a picture of the Claire Castle. And construction-wise, what he's proposing is similar to this. The variance application has changed significantly. Again, Mr. Sabert's here. When we met earlier, he was talking about variances on three different issues. He specifically has just said he doesn't need a variance for setbacks. He's comfortable, he can do the building, the parking, and meet the setbacks. He also now no longer needs a variance for lot coverage as, at this point, he's not even going to get into carports. If that happens in the future, it happens in the future. He also worked with his architect and the original variance request for the height was a 15-foot variance to go up 55 feet with this apartment building. And by changing the pitch, it's still a proposed pitched roof versus a flat roof, but by changing the pitch and et cetera, he now needs a variance for 7 feet 6 inches. So, he's basically knocked what he was requesting in half as far as that part of the variance request. And again, in the B3 district, 40 feet is, it's allowed without a variance. This is the proposal. It's a senior independent living apartment building. The footprint of the concept is 12,847 square feet, taking up 21.6% of the site's square footage. Want to describe quickly some neighboring property information. Properties across, or properties to the south include the Willow. East across Mitchell Street, you've got Dairy Queen. North, you've got the Dollar Store. They are zoned B3. And quite frankly, some of these properties in the B3, particularly across Mitchell Street, you know, you've got the former Kentucky Fried Chicken building. It's a blighted building. So, you've got some blight in the area. The building has serious damage from water that had leaked in it and froze and thawed over the winter. It's got pigeons in it. So, we've got some blighted properties nearby. Also, directly across the street from the site is a massive billboard, which is much taller and larger than our ordinance would allow. But billboards are M-dot. So, these are all B3, but we've got Dairy Queen, Dollar, General, Willow. These are typical businesses for a B3 district. To the west across Aspen Street, that area is zoned RM2 multifamily residential. So, you've got residential. You've got a lot of rental properties there, particularly if you go along Cottage Street. It's kind of interesting because you see their rentals, but you see people parking in lawns and that. Some of the landlords just, you know, haven't been able to provide, you know, good paved parking for their rentals. This here is a, in your original packet, you had a GIS aerial. If anyone would like one, I can give them out real quick. I don't know if anyone needs one. But basically, I think you're all familiar with the site. It's basically, it's looking at combining seven lots. Here's the Dollar General. This GIS is from 2010. So, Dollar General was not built, but you've got seven different lots here that are going to be combined to make the site. And I think the applicant's architect came up with 1.36 acres. I estimated it at 1.4. We do have other tall apartment buildings in town. We talked about this last time. I don't need to talk about it. But Harborview is six stories. And this, along with Kirkland Terrace, this is seven stories. Both of these are also in zone districts that allow for up to buildings 40 feet in height. So, they're two examples of ones that are clearly larger than 40 feet. It's important, we do go through the standards. And basically, the review standards, this one, Section 4669B2, we discussed this last week, or a couple of weeks ago. But the zoning board of appeals may authorize a variance from a strict application of the provisions of the zoning ordinance whereby reason of exceptional narrowness, shallowness, shape, area of a specific piece of property, at the time of enactment of the ordinance, or by reason of exceptional conditions of such property, the strict application of the regulations enacted would result in peculiar or exceptional practical difficulties to, or exceptional undue hardship upon the owner of the property. And that's one where, when I get done with this presentation, if you have questions for Mr. Sabert, we'll get into that. But this is a staff finding. And it's basically myself, fellow staff, and we talked about this a little bit, but I got, you know, doing some calculations and potential practical difficulties that I feel may be there is, I know for this project that they have planned, they're calling for 46 units. He can explain why that is needed, et cetera. But if you were, for example, to take this four-story building and lower it, spread it out to get 46 units, you then would get again into the lot coverage issue. You'd need a variance to go bigger there. You also then may get into a situation where you may need a variance for parking because right now there's adequate parking spaces for a 46 unit. So, those, if you were to try to get the same number of units, expand the building some, those are a couple of issues that may come up. And I know in the case of the apartment condo complex across here, that's a three-story building. And my understanding is that required a height variance also, even being three stories. But obviously, the pitch of the roof is significantly, you know, it's steeper. Want to next get into some of the other standards in 4669-4. And these, again, for those that don't know, it's part of the zoning enabling act and we need to go over these. The requested variance will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent properties. That's the standard. We do not feel this variance is going to change the supply of light or air to adjacent The next standard, the requested variance will not unreasonably increase congestion in public streets. The finding, again, this is staff finding, the variance will have a minimal impact on traffic volumes. This use of the property will have less vehicular traffic than many other commercial uses for this site would. John Wallace for the planning commission, which I did not have at the time we met, I didn't know he could do this, but for the planning commission, he went to a site. And what that site did, looking for my notes, it was a site that specifically had to do with vehicular traffic in senior living apartments, senior living complexes. And you could plug formulas in that included things like the number of dwelling units. It included the average age of the residents because that affects travel in and out. It included how affluent the residents are. Are they low income, moderate income, middle income? And it also factored in, is there available bus shuttle-type service like we have? And in doing so, he came up with a figure for this apartment complex. It estimate, and it's an estimate, that there would be 115 trips per day to and from this Cadillac Castle site. And for example, if half of them use the Aspen Street ingress egress, if half use the Mitchell Street, basically between 8:00 AM and 10:00 PM, that 14-hour period, you would literally be looking at roughly four cars on average going through either exit. Myself, I was at their Claire site over, just over a week ago, and I took some pictures. I was curious what the carports looked like. And I was there between that and talking to the manager. I was there a half hour and there was only one vehicle that came through. And it was a person who came home from shopping and carried some things in. And so, that one is not size-wise or unit-wise as big as this, but I mean, I was there a half hour and there was one vehicle. So, this is, again, it's a formula you can use, you can estimate it. But that's why we feel that the impact of traffic will be minimal. What I did want to add is that Mitchell Street, through that area, you have sidewalks, there's roadside lighting. The sidewalks on Mitchell Street from here, you can literally, you could leave the apartment, go to the sidewalk, you could literally walk all the way to Mackinac Trail on a sidewalk. So, a person could walk to Big Boy. You know, they could walk, obviously, next door to Willow, so forth. Or a person can easily walk on that sidewalk of Mitchell Street. You know, they can go to Rite Aid, Family Fair. They can walk downtown if they choose. So, there are sidewalks in that, in the area, which helps alleviate congestion because people, if they can, you know, walk a couple hundred yards on a sidewalk, they're not going to be hopping in a car. And quite frankly, if you have something like an apartment complex there, you're going to find the sidewalk is going to be much, much better maintained in the winter because they have a reason to maintain it. As I said, because of that, residents can walk to restaurants and shopping versus having to get in their car. One thing I wanted to point out, I just took this picture of Mitchell Street and it basically shows the former Hagstrom's Flower Shop. You can see that the building is built right on the property line right away. And, you know, obviously, in this particular area, the sidewalk is right by Mitchell Street, but you've got a light. But I put on your desk a copy of the concept. I think I put this on yours. And the only point I wanted to make by this was, if you look at the Mitchell Street area, the developer does plan to adhere to the 20-foot setback. And they do plan on having landscaping there. So, this particular picture here is of that site. And it certainly, with what their plan is, I believe would be more attractive than what you've got there now. You can see Dairy Queen across the street. The next standard, the requested variance will not increase the danger of fire or endanger the public safety. Staff again feels the requested variance is not anticipated to increase the danger of fire or endanger the public safety. Our public, or our fire department advocated for two separate driveways. They definitely, for fire trucks, wanted ingress egress off of both Mitchell and Aspen Street. And in the original staff report, you got, you all had a, all of you had a letter from our fire marshal. They're accustomed to making calls for services to Harborview and, you know, they are more than adequate at handling that. The next standard is the requested variance will not unreasonably diminish or impair established property values within the surrounding area. We actually feel this will improve surrounding property values. And at the planning commission, two local businesses within that 300-foot area that gets the public notice, they spoke and they were definitely in favor of it. And, you know, they feel this will definitely improve the look and the value of properties in the area. The next standard is the requested variance will not impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals, or welfare of the inhabitants of the city. We, again, staff, feel this variance would not impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals, or welfare of the inhabitants of the city. What was interesting was staff, police and fire department. They explained that they actually feel that a development like this will potentially increase public safety in that immediate area neighborhood. And they referred to something called eyes on the street. And they said, when you have eyes on the street, people in the neighborhood, people moving around, this is beneficial to them because, quite frankly, they look out for each other. And if they see something that doesn't look right, or they see what they think is suspicious activity, they actually will make a phone call. So, they refer to it as eyes on the street, but having 46 residents there coming and going, looking out their windows, it potentially could improve, you know, public safety in an area. Staff comments. The zoning board of appeals previously did grant a height variance to the apartment condominium complex across the street on North Lake. It too is in a zone district with 40-foot restriction. This is it. You know, it's over 40 foot tall. Nick was on the ZBA when that occurred. I don't know if Cliff, if you were, but Nick was. If you have any questions on that, he can explain that. But there is certainly a precedent, whether it be with the planning commission or the zoning board of appeals, to allow certain developments to exceed the 40-foot limit. Also want to mention, there are two recent housing studies for Wexford County. One I mentioned when we met two weeks ago. Both, though, concluded that we have an immediate need for senior independent living housing for seniors of all socioeconomic letters, or levels. And in the staff report that I put together for you folks, I mentioned that. And the one, the one study, I got to find my notes here. The one study was done recently, okay, it was done by a firm called Community Research Services. And I believe they work through Alliance for Economic Development, which is a firm that our, both our chamber has used, I believe our industrial group. I know who they are. But their housing study showed that there was an immediate demand for up to 60 senior housing units of various socioeconomic levels, an immediate demand right here in Cadillac at this time. So, you know, this fits a need. And obviously, you know, we as staff feel that this particular project really kind of has a softer, a softer imprint on the neighborhood versus other things that are allowed in a B3 district, such as a box store like Dollar General, where you would have trucks delivering, you know, semi-trucks, other trucks delivering in the rear versus like a fast food restaurant where you've got drive-through, you've got traffic going through there from 6:00 AM to, you know, 10, 11 o'clock at night, or a gas station. So, we as staff, and particularly our planning director, and I think the planning commission especially, felt that this kind of a project is a, has a softer impact on the neighborhood versus a more high-traffic, more lit-up type of business that would also, for example, have a pole sign, something out like that there. Notification of the public hearing on this application was given to all property owners within 300 feet of the subject site. And a notice was placed on the Cadillac news not less than 15 days prior to the hearing date. See if there's a, bear with me one moment. Lastly, based on a finding of compliance or non-compliance with the standards of the ordinance, the board shall approve, approve with conditions, or deny the variance application. Reasonable conditions may be attached to an approval in order to achieve compliance with the standards. That pretty much wraps up what I'm going to speak about. If you have questions for me, if you have questions for Mr. Sabert, there are people here. So, they're certainly welcome to speak. And if you do get up and speak, please write your name and, you know, print your name and your address so we know, you know, who is speaking.
I was talking with Mr. Sabert, if he wants to say something first.
Thank you.
No, no, the developer first.
That's him.
Well, I'm sorry.
He's been hunting.
I've been hunting.
He's been hunting.
Let me change my glasses.
He's been bird hunting.
Excuse my appearance.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. I had a chance to.
I got short memories sometimes.
Nick, I apologize. I also want to mention, as far as the public notice, we did get, we did get a letter from the neighbor to the west, Mr. Ish. We received that yesterday. We received a letter just prior to this from the general manager of Willow. I've not read that. And in your packet, there was a couple of letters also that had to do with public comment. So, we have received public comment since the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Hey, it's been that kind of a day. I left the house about 6:30 this morning and been to Alpine and back and I wanted to get back for this meeting. So, anyways, I appreciate the opportunity and I appreciate very much everybody on this board coming to a ZBA meeting on a Friday evening. I know you'd probably rather be somewhere else. So, since our last meeting, I think it was at the 13th, I think it was. You know, I've given a lot of thought to Mr. Ish's comments at the planning commission. And, you know, I made an effort early on to meet with Conrad and actually sat down with him on his porch and went over the drawings with him and so forth. And I know that he's talked to my son Garrett on the phone as well. So, you know, in the spirit of honestly trying to be a good neighbor and build a project that not only the community can be proud of, but the neighborhood can be proud of, I gave it a lot of thought. And in talking with Mike and the other folks here at the city, we decided that we could withdraw two of the variance requests. I don't like taking the carports off the table. I think they're important, but I understand the issue. So, we've taken them off the table. That's no longer a request. That solved the lot coverage variance that we're requesting. So, the building footprint itself does comply with your ordinance. The setback issue, same way, when the carports went away, that issue goes away. So, I also sat down and went over the building prototype with my architect. And I got to thinking about what we did in St. John's. And very similar site. That one's actually in the core of the downtown community. But it is the tallest building on that block. We put a hip roof on that building with a 512 pitch. And so, I asked the architect to calculate, what difference would that make on this building? And it makes seven and a half feet. And I can live with, I, personally, I like this gable roof. It looks very nice. But the St. John's roof looks just as good. And so, that's what we did and we went to a hip roof. So, that took, takes our variance from a request of 15 down to 7 feet 6 inches. And so, I, as a developer, I'm making an effort to address the concerns that have been voiced. We can still have a great-looking building and a great project. So, those are the efforts that we've made in our development team. And the height of the building, this particular prototype, is important from the standpoint, and I know the economics of a deal aren't really a justification. I get that. But the reality is, I have to get a viable number of units to make the economics work. I couldn't build Claire or St. John's today. One, with interest rates where they're at. Two, with construction costs, they're absolutely through the roof. I don't know if anybody's done any building lately, but it's just insane. And the only way we can make these deals work, to be candid with you, is to get an allocation of credits. We sell the credits to an investor and it buys the cost of that, the debt on that project, which should normally be 80%. We take the revenue, the investment from the sale of those credits, we're able to buy that debt down to about 30% of the cost. And based upon that, and the rents that we can charge based upon the median income here in Wexford County, we can make the economics of the deal work. I can't do it on 24 units because we have certain fixed costs. And the more units I have to spread those fixed costs over, the more economically viable the project becomes. And that's why I, you know, I'd love to do 50 units. I'd love to do 60 because that's substantiated by the market report that was, I think you referenced it, that Kelly Murdock did. So, we feel very strongly, and I know the city's got several calls so far from people already wanting to get on a wait list. I have a lady who's managing a project, Claire Castle, that we've put her, tasked her with fielding those calls and calling those people back and beginning to establish a rapport with potential tenants. So, we've already got great interest in the project from potential tenants. So, a little bit about the application. We've actually been working on this now for about five months. I think I reviewed this briefly with you the last time around. The state housing authorities, the allocating agency for these federal low-income housing tax credits, it's an extremely, extremely competitive process. They are always way oversubscribed. How many applications they'll get for this round, I don't know, but they only hold two rounds a year. One in October 1, one in April 1. We have a brand-new, what they call qualified allocation plan on this round. Every two years, they tweak that. It's the rules of the game. And so, it's important for us to get in this round because we've been at this for some time. And every time they tweak the QAP, for those folks who are trying to get in the industry, it becomes a little more difficult for them to have a, what I would consider to be a competitive application. So, what do I mean by competitive? Today, as I stand here, and I just talked with my consultant who's finishing up the package as we speak, our application scores at 123. I've got one we're doing in Kalamazoo that scores 132. I've got one in Grand Rapids that scores 125. Every single point on an application is extremely important. We're frankly ecstatic that we're at 123 in Cadillac, Michigan. I did not anticipate getting to that point. The site plan approval is worth five points on the application. The planning commission has approved the site plan, subject to the grant of the variances at the time that we originally submitted. We're down to one and we've cut that in half. So, it's worth five points. We either go in at 123 or we go in at 118. And every single point can mean the difference between securing an allocation of credit or not securing an allocation of credit. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I'll stay here till the end and hopefully.
What effect would a lower roof have on, like a snow load?
It meets the code.
Yeah, okay.
It's just a lower pitch. You know, the ends of the building are sort of flattened out. You don't have those intersecting gables in the front and the back. It's like a hip roof you'd see on a building, but it's much larger. And interestingly enough, it even helped us in the cost of the project. Hip roof is interesting to me, a little cheaper than doing a high, that's a 10, 12 pitch on that gable. I mean, that's a steep roof. And I think the roofers will be a little happier too, four stories up. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it meets the code.
Good.
And the other thing that I just mentioned to you, too, that, you know, with the carports off, we're probably gonna end up having to put more pole lights on the site, which is gonna light the site up a little bit better. The carports all had lights under them for security purposes, and they were designed so you can see through them. That's, that's the current design on carports. That's what everybody wants to see, and I'm, I'm sure the, the police would agree with that. So, it's sprinkled, fully sprinkled, so, you know, we, we meet all the building and fire code. We have to. With the, any, any other questions?
The mechanicals, will they, where will they be located?
Each unit has a through-wall heating and air conditioning unit, and the mechanicals for the common areas, as you go up the floors, we have a, on the end of each hall, there's a, there's a forced air furnace with a condensing unit, you know, down on the ground, that provides the cooling and heating for, for that corridor. And then there's a mechanical room off the backside of the community space on the first floor where we, and we provide hot water for the residents through a boiler system. We heat it. We have two large tanks. You store it. We used to put a hot water heater in every unit, but we've learned over the years, that's not a good idea, because those things rust out, and if somebody's not around, and they're gone for a week, all of a sudden, you got water damage all the way down. So, we provide hot water through a central system, but they, the residents pay their own heat and electric and cooling. Washer and dryer in each unit, fully furnished with appliances, you know, electric stove, that kind of thing, so...
What's the square footage of the units?
These are all gonna be two bedrooms. I wish I'd have brought that map. Generally, they're in that eight-fifty to, to nine-hundred range. And I, I don't know if that's on. I don't think that's on here. I can get that information for you, but that's generally in that eight, you know, eight to nine range. Just depends. Some of them are a little smaller than others. Like these end units are probably gonna be a little larger than the units in the middle of the building, just because of the nature of the beast, so to speak. About two square feet, not a lot. They'll each have a patio or balcony, you know? And we, the other thing that I just pointed out, we always do a nice dumpster enclosure, and that's a cement enclosure. We put a white, a, a, well, a, a big iron gate, and then we put that white vinyl fencing up the front of it, so it ties into the trim of the building, et cetera. And I, I've learned of the last couple of projects, in a building like this, I need place for salt, snow blowers, that kind of thing. Because you can't put them in the building. You can't put any sort of equipment that's got gas in it, so we've, we've got showing on here a little. I'm gonna build it into that structure, storage shed, or that kind of thing. And we'll hire the lawn maintenance and the plowing, all that stuff, local contractors.
I believe I've got a picture of the dumpster right there for you. That's in Clare.
We do a pedestrian access on the side there that you can see, because we like to keep those gates closed. I, I hate driving by projects where those things are left open and, you know. Anyways, I'd appreciate your consideration tonight. We, we are finalizing the application this weekend. It's been a lot of work, a lot of effort, and, and I want to compliment your city staff, Mike and, oh gosh, I'm drawing a blank.
Mike and John?
John. John has put an awful lot of work in on some exhibits that we had to have for the application, and they've done a great job for us. So, we're gonna have that thing packaged up by Sunday night, and Monday morning, it's gonna be delivered to Mishna. So, it's either gonna be one-eighteen, or it's gonna be one-twenty-three. That's where we're at. Thank you for your time.
Okay, public, come on, we need to state your name and address, and also write it, so we know.
Darryl Conrad Ish, eight-twenty-eight Aspen Street, Cadillac, Michigan.
And also, you're gonna be, hold in three minutes to the, for the limit.
Understood. I was told that earlier, and so I'm gonna wing this. I wish you would all read my statement. I put out a statement last time when I couldn't make it. I am a property owner in the area. In fact, I believe, even though there are other property owners that make a lot more money, have a lot more money, I have the most to lose or gain by this, and I have a lot of problems with it. The city has worked very hard with this developer, very hard, indeed. However, hasn't worked hard with me to figure out how to stop it. Somehow, it seems unfair. Seems horribly unfair. I'm emotionally disabled, and I'm having a hard time right now. If you have any questions for me, I'll answer them. Otherwise, I think I need to leave this meeting. Please read my state. Please.
I don't want to lie. Okay, anybody else? I said, just state your name and address, and...
Good evening, everybody.
And, and print it, print it there for Mike.
I'm Felicia Clark. I live at four-twenty-one Crippen Street. I'll keep it short and sweet. I know it's been a, a long day for everybody. I'm affiliated with the Willow Market and Meats, and we just have a couple of words to say here. Okay. As the new owners of the Willow Market and Meats, we are extremely excited to see the continuing growth and revitalization, revitalization of downtown Cadillac, and look forward to the same revitalization on the south end. As lifelong residents of Cadillac, we continue to invest in our community to provide more jobs for a stronger, more attractive community. We understand that the developer of the Cadillac Castle projects has several other housing developments in Michigan, and serves the community in many ways. His development projects are first-class, and will serve a very necessary need for elderly citizens. As a community, we are fortunate to have a developer interested in bringing a new business to the south end of Cadillac. We are in full support of this minor variance, realizing the benefits that this project will bring to our business, as well as elderly citizens, area business, and aesthetic to the south end of Cadillac. On behalf of Dan Minor, Todd Carlson, Andrew Stump, Alex Busalis, and Bruce Peacock, we the owners of the Willow Market and Meats support this minor variance to the Cadillac Castle project. And on a personal note, I have been living in Cadillac for about the last fifteen years. I lived in many places before that, and I absolutely love this town. I love this community, and I really think this project will bring positive things to our community, and kind of just brighten up the south end of, of town, you know? It needs a, needs a little work. So, thank you very much, and you guys have a great night.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else?
Good evening. Don't start my three minutes yet. My name's Randy Lindell, two-O-one Howard Cadillac. Good evening. Couple of things real quick I'd like to talk about. Harborview, Kirkland Terrace, you know, are nice facilities. This gentleman wants to build this forty-eight unit, and now he mentioned that he'd like to build a sixty. Well, this is his properties and, and his monies, and the other projects are private or are with the Cadillac Housing Commission, I believe. So, anyways, this is a private contractor wanting us to do add-ons to our ordinances, and the founding city council people many years ago have stipulated that these ordinances are there for a specific reason, height, zoning, parcels, et cetera, et cetera. So, this is why I oppose the project. There, he mentions the lights and the air quality. I walked a property today, and the winds were coming directly out, and CMI, the foundry, four winds, everything was blowing that way. And if you go, and if you go build a big unit right there, where's all that, you know, air quality gonna be now? You know, there, I mentioned before that Cadillac News just put out an article about life expectancy around Lake Cadillac. I don't know if any of you are, were aware of that. And the people have shorter lifespans, for some reason, in the east part of town, right where that, where that's going. I don't know what's up there. But anyways, I'm here to ask the board to not approve it, this project. No add-ons to city ordinances. It's gonna change complexity of the neighborhood. I believe we should allow the Cadillac lofts. What else is going on? Cadillac Junction to build theirs, and see how that materializes. There's another project going, apartment building going south of town right now, and I think we should wait, and we should leave the city ordinances as is, do not change them. A couple of things that was pointed out. Hagstrom Flower Shop was shown sitting right on Mitchell Street. Well, you gotta remember, that facility has been there for fifty years. Mitchell Street was only a two-lane road. No, that's why it sits, you know, so far off the sidewalk and that. So, those are just a couple of issues, but the city should not be tweaking and changing and adding on to the ordinances to comply to certain individuals. And one last thing. What are you gonna do with the snow? Where, where are you gonna, what are you gonna do with the snow in the wintertime? Where's that all gonna go? You know? You got apartment complex, you're gonna have room for snow?
Okay, well, you said, your time is up.
Was your timing me, Nick?
Hmm?
Was your timing me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Stephen King. I live at six-oh-four Holly Road, and I'm here tonight as a homeowner within a short distance of this proposed project, and also a business owner that back in two thousand and two bought a vacant building on the south end of town, the old family physician building, and I have a law firm and a title company there. This is an exciting project. We worked with the Willow. It's really neat to see the south end getting energized again. As a business owner there, I live all around this project. My house is right around the corner from it. Three-oh-one Lake Street, which got the variance for the height, has been a wonderful addition to the neighborhood. I think this slight variance for seven and a half feet is perfect for a wonderful project for the community. Thank you for your consideration.
Any other comments? If not, probably come close. It's our, our time. I think, like I said, the one big thing, you know, if they didn't put a roof on it, he wouldn't be here. It hit the forty feet with no problem. The roof, with a flat roof, you got several problems. They're notorious for leaking. You also gotta have a drainage system, which is more expensive. Then, like you said, then you got the snow load problem. Then you got a building that looks like that, with the junk on, sitting on the roof. With a, with a nice peak covering over that stuff, it's a nice-looking building. And I think that seven and a half feet, to me, is not, I mean, we, that's the reason we allowed the extra heights on Lake Street, was the fact that they covered, one thing is they covered the mechanical, and it made it look a lot nicer in the town. Any comments or questions, or...
Something with a roof looks a lot better than...
Yeah, you get rid of...
Than that flat roof.
Yeah, you get rid of the eyesore of the roof. Like I said, at forty feet, they could build it, the flat roof, but I know you don't want to, and I agree, why? Northern Michigan, flat roofs ain't no, not a place for northern Michigan. And I said, seven and a half feet is a lot less than what they have before. Do we have a motion or anything?
I make a motion to approve it. One second.
Okay.
We do have to have, because there's only four here, and it's a variance type of application, we would have to have a unanimous vote for it to pass, just so you know. Okay, Nichols?
Yes.
Genzek?
Yes.
Pevilio?
Yes.
Allen?
Yeah.
Thank you. Motion.
And you find points? Yep.
Phil, thank you for coming again. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
Oh, I gotta do this thing.
Yeah. I feel sorry for Mr. Ish, but I'm sorry for the community. It's definitely...
Okay. Any, well, any more comments?
No.
Nope? Well, I guess we'll adjourn the meeting. So, y'all late?